The first official, first regular, not official, but the first regular meeting of March for the city council. I'm proud to announce that this is the last meeting for the winter. Next meeting will be in the spring.
We're supposed to have snow in a few days.
Yep.
Why didn't you tell them to see that?
Well, thank you for pouring water on the little flame that I had going. I appreciate that.
No problem, anytime.
I'm calling the meeting to order. We will begin with our normal ritual of the pledge of allegiance, followed by the community invocation. Please stand with me as we honor our national symbol. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do y'all pray with me? Father in heaven, thank you for this council meeting. Lord, I just thank you for our mayor and the council members, Lord, that govern our city. I pray, Father, that you'd give them wisdom and grace as they make decisions tonight, Lord. I pray that you would just bless our city, Lord. We love living in Emmett, Lord. We pray for our public safety, fire department, and police department, as well as the ambulance, Lord. And we pray for the, all the different departments of our city, Lord. I pray that they would run well and with wisdom, Lord, that you would guide us, Lord, as we make decisions for our city tonight. Lord, I pray that it would just be a blessing, Lord, to live here, and that would continue, Lord, as things grow and as things change. Lord, I pray that you would just give extra measure of understanding. And, Lord, as we develop things and as we change things, Lord, I pray, Father, that they would be, I'm in accordance to the best of your citizens here, Lord, in Emmett. We love you and praise you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor.
Well, I hope I was to the right.
Been so much surgery.
Okay, council, are there any good faith amendments that need to be made to the, to the agenda? Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest? We do have a Tonya Rancini who is asking for a permit to bartend. If anyone knows Tonya, personal friends, family member. Hearing none. Any declarations of discussion outside the open meeting with anything that we might be voting on tonight that you inadvertently sucked into? Or inadvertently? Hearing none. Okay, going on to the issues. Does the, does the city council have anything for the good of the order? Then let's have Commissioner Willie, the chair of the Gem County Commission, but he's here with his other hat tonight. He's kind of the head honcho of the, the economic...
Development Foundation.
Development Foundation, which is the nonprofit slice for the Gem County Chamber of Commerce. And because of his vision and his energy, he is asking the city to assist in a makeover, not just of the city, but of the, the, basically, I guess you'd say, the, the trade corridor of the Gem community, what we used to call the Gem community. And this would include trails that are in the county. We have a master plan where someday we're hoping to join them up with the trails that we have here in the city along the river. Tubing is, is a big deal in the summer. And there are those who have visions for more than just tubing and, and fishing, other things, but that's way down the road. We'll have an opportunity in the not-too-distant future, perhaps, to obtain land that we don't have right now for, I guess you'd say, passive recreation. And so, the Economic Development Foundation has, has a vision, and they'd like, they'd like the city to be a part of it. So if, without further ado, we'll have you do your little presentation, and then we'll get down to the, to what you're asking us to approve.
Thank you, Mayor, for the introduction. Council members, as the mayor said, one of my collateral duties here is I am the chairman of the Economic Development Foundation. And we're asking for a letter of support for this downtown renovation project that we've, we've begun. And the mayor's been a part of that since our first meeting. But I'll give, get in just a little bit of background. What I want to talk about, and I'm going to go through this quickly. I pared down the presentation, but it's still a lot, so I'm not going to cover every bullet on the slide. But I've given the mayor, and Mike's got a copy of the presentation. You're welcome to send me any questions you might have. So, just a little bit about what EDF is, what our mission and vision, how we've been working on that, and then a lot about the downtown redevelopment project. We hired a consultant, Roger Brooks. I'll talk about him, some of the takeaways from that, what we are focused on trying to do downtown, what the successful downtown redevelopment projects have all in common, and then talk a little bit about what we've done to date and what our next steps are. So, the Gem County Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Foundation is a 501(c)(3). It was created in 213. It got its nonprofit status in 2014. We have a board of directors. We are separate from the chamber board. This is a separate board of directors. And you can see there the list of those board of directors. And we have membership from the county and from the, the city council on that board. Our mission is to attract and retain business in Gem County, trying to improve the standard of living and quality of life for our citizens. And we want, in the vision statement, this is from an older workshop. I think that we're going to update this. But the current vision that we have says to help Gem County prosper and fulfill its destiny as the Valley of Plenty, which was a term that's been used for quite a while in Gem County. We've come up with a little bit of a branding already in our project, and so we probably tweak that here in the future. What are we doing? So, the EDF has been actively involved, the community. It's been around since, like I said, since 2014. It was part of the old downtown, was it the Business District? I think. It received some funds from that project, and it kind of languished for a while. But what we've done since I've been involved, we've worked with the city on downtown beautification. We replaced all the trees that were dying and decaying and were full of bugs. We contributed to the fair board for the reader board as you come into town, that has all the announcements on it. We started working on a non-motorized trail project, which actually was started by Jefferson Jenkins years ago, and then it also kind of floundered. We are now working with BLM to get that project moving forward. We've been working on it about a year and a half since we took that on. We've helped small businesses here in town by providing small grants for equipment and for inventory to help new businesses start up here in town. We've, about eight months ago, they started a women's business network. That's done by Amber Hines, one of our board members. And Susan Jenkins is also involved in that women's business network. They have a monthly meeting. They've had eight of them, I think, so far. It's basically an opportunity for women entrepreneurs to come together, network. They have a guest speaker every, every month, and they learn. And it's been very successful. And then the biggest thing that we're working on is this downtown redevelopment project. Like many of you, I've been saddened by the number of empty buildings that we have, the lack of commerce that we have downtown, the lack of activities that we have. And we all have to go over the hill. And that's becoming more and more problematic as, as the valley grows. So what are we trying to do? We're trying to improve the quality of life of our citizens by creating this vibrant downtown community where we can shop, we can dine, and we have activities that our, our citizens can do year-round. How are we doing that? We created this downtown Emmett redevelopment team. And that's been a cooperation between the, the EDF, the chamber, the mayor, the city, the county commissioners, and business owners and downtown property owners, which we've met with. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. And how are we, how are we doing this? Well, we're trying to focus on local residents, our small business and our properties, our property owners, the businesses, the buildings that are empty. We want to bring in a good selection of retail and dining. We want to have some nightlife and cultural activities. And, and we want to focus on our unique location here on the river. So what are the benefits? Well, provides all of us as citizens the ability to shop and dine and have activities here locally, so we don't have to venture out of town to do those things on the weekends and in the evenings. For business owners, it'll increase profit. It'll increase business. And for property owners, it increases, if you increase business, you can increase the demand for space, which increases rents and property values. So it's a win for everyone. So Roger Brooks is the consultant. He has a company called Decimation Development Association. He is the consultant that came in and helped Indian Creek Plaza. When Caldwell was trying to figure out what to do downtown, they hired Mr. Brooks's company. He came in, he actually wrote their plan. And we'll talk about what we had him do for us. He's worked with thousands of communities across the United States, large, small, in-between. In Idaho, most notably locally, Caldwell and Indian Creek Plaza, but also Sun Valley and McCall. For Indian Creek, he actually wrote the branding, marketing, development plan for Indian Creek Plaza and their program plan. So he was instrumental in putting all that together for them. We had a meeting last fall with Mr. Brooks. We had him come here, actually met here in, in the chambers. We toured the city, then we took a larger tour of the counties who could understand the agritourism and the other things that the county brings to bear. He then spent about three hours providing information to us. And it was some of the information that I'm going to provide here in a few minutes, but it was a lot. I mean, just, the gentleman is just a wealth of knowledge. So he provided about a three-hour presentation on different things that we should be thinking about. And this is after he secretly went around town on his own and looked at our business spaces, looked at our community. And then we discussed with, with the members that were here, and these were members from the city, the county, the chamber, and some local business owners. We talked about what was our vision, what were our goals. Out of that, he went back to his office in Washington, Upper Washington, and he sent us a document, which were the next steps for Emmett. This is what I recommend. Given what you told me, given what you have, this is what I think you need to look at. So what were the key takeaways from that presentation? He gave us a lot of information on what people really are looking for today. And when you think about these things, and I want you to think about what they've done in Indian Creek, what you see when you go to the village in the, in the center of the village, when you go to these areas where it's really pedestrian-friendly, right? Big malls, the days of the malls are dying. They've been dying for years. What people want are public gathering places with wide sidewalks, outdoor dining, well-lit, pedestrian-friendly. So they're looking for this, these areas where they can shop and dine locally. And you're seeing this across the United States in all different-sized communities. They're looking for life after 6:00. Most families have two parents that work. They get off at 5:00 or 5:30. By the time they get home, they're eating at 7:00, 7:30. They're doing their shopping after 7:00. A lot of it's done online now, but it's being done in the evenings. And he really focused, I just finished watching one of his tutorial videos with our, one of, one of the committees last week, and he really focuses on this. Think of your downtown like your community living room. It's where you want to go and hang out. It's where you want to watch a movie. It's where you want to go see some art. So he really focuses on making your downtown a place where you want to hang out. If you hang out there, everybody else will too. But what's the bottom line? We're trying to improve the quality of life of our citizens by creating a community living room where we can all hang out 300-plus days a year. This is a lot of information, but this is just why he says this shift is taking place. And I already covered some of this. Our millennials don't want to drive. They don't want to travel. They want to spend their time locally. A lot of them don't even get driver's license now until they're later in life. There's a focus to go away from big chains and more to, you know, Etsy-type shops, your butcher, your baker, your candlestick maker, your local business. Seventy-two percent of households, both parents work, which means they shop after hours because they're both working all day. And then retail spending, 70% of that takes place after 6:00 as well. So what are the priorities they're looking for? A safe, well-lit, full-of-life, pedestrian-friendly place to go. This is what he recommends you have in each, in a successful downtown. This is what you need to have. You need to have this rule of critical mass, which is 10, you know, 10 places where the food focus, 10 places that are destination retail shops, and at least 10 of those have to be open after 6:00 p.m., right? Some more just information about what makes a thriving downtown, what's inside the building, is this as important of what's outside? There's been a lot of focus on, on beautification. Beautification's great, but if there's nothing to go to, nobody comes. And we've seen that even here in Emmett. There have been a number of iterations where we did beautification projects, but it really didn't do, have any effect, right? So he recommends starting small. We talked about this in our executive team. He says you can even start with one block. I think we've decided to start with two. Main Street, East and West, Washington. And then it'll filter out in a couple, as the mayor said, it'll bleed out of that area, but we're going to really focus on those two blocks downtown. And then your downtown's got to have a focus, right? You got to have something that draws people here. And he talks about anchor tenants. Those are places where you, it brings people back over and over again. And we have some of that already. And when I talk about what's included in this downtown mix, you're going to see that we already have a lot of these things. So this is what he says you really need to look at having in your downtown if you want people to come here on a regular basis. What's going to bring you here at least once, you know, once a month, minimum? If, if we get every citizen down here once a month on a weekend to shop and dine, it would be vibrant, you know, in a community of our size. So a coffee shop, a bakery, at least four restaurants, burgers and shake places, casual clothing, ice cream, confectionery, we already have, home accents and gifts, we already have, a deli, we have, a garden store with outside, outside services, at least three specialty stores that are focused in your, your area, geographic area, an antique store, gift shops, an outfitter, and then perhaps a pharmacy. And this is just a recommended list. This doesn't mean we're going to do every single one of these, but this is what he's learned with working with all of these thousands of communities across the U.S. So they did a survey, and they surveyed over 2,000 successful downtowns to say, what has made you successful? And they've got this list, and I'm going to boil this down for you. These are the ingredients that they all had. They all had a strong retail and dining focus. They all had this critical mass that I talked about, the 10-10-10 rule. They all had an, at least one anchor tenant. And you can think of an anchor tenant, it doesn't have to be a business or a restaurant. It could be an activity, you know? And we have several here, you know? The concerts that are going on out at the mill, that's, that could be considered an anchor tenant. It brings people back to town over and over again for different activities. Pioneers with patient money. This is an important one, and we're working on this. It basically convincing your building and property owners that they have to be patient and work through the process, right? It's not going to be an overnight transition. They may have to accept some lower rents at the beginning so that new businesses can do tenant improvements, right? So that they can invest in, they've got to invest also. A narrow Main Street in an intimate setting. Traffic, according to Roger, traffic is your enemy, right? And we're already working with the mayor and looking at the downtown traffic patterns and parking, but you want a pedestrian-friendly. And this is why you're seeing in a lot of communities, Indian Creek, downtown Boise, they're closing off streets and making them pedestrian-only, right? And I'm not saying we're going there right away, but that's something we're thinking about, right? Retail blade signs. So this gets into weight finding and signage. Having signage, and if you drive around town, I want you to look at where the signs are for our downtown businesses, mine included. One of them at least is up high. Well, guess what? If you're in your car, you can't see it, which is why blade signs that hang on the building that stick out, and of course, within some guidelines, where you can see it as you walk by or you drive by, so you know what's in the store, and it has some information about what the business actually does. Outdoor patio sidewalk dining. So it's a big shift now to be outside. I was just down at the Village over the weekend, and their plaza was packed with people. Now, they have a lot more residents, they got apartments nearby, there's other factors, but still, there were people out there on Sunday afternoon just hanging out, sitting on the bench. And then last but not least, beautification, which is facades and street beautification. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So what have we done so far? Like I said, we met with Roger Brooks. We had him down here. We spent a day with him. He went back, gave us a, basically, an action plan. We formed an executive team. That team's made up of the mayor, myself, Amber Hines, who is our marketing and branding expert, and Susan Jenkins, a local property and business owner. We engaged a professional grant writer, and we've actually submitted two grants already. Those are both AARP grants focused on downtown, you know, seniors and trying to make it more usable. We also, Amber actually has a multi-market, a multi-agency marketing firm, so she is actually working on our marketing, and we've engaged her to do that. We identified through a brainstorming session and given the guidance that we got from Mr. Brooks, we identified a number of people that we wanted to task to be on the team. We did that. We held a kickoff meeting, and then we organized that team into five committees. So what are the, what's the team? Well, they're doers. This isn't a board of directors. These are actually people that are going to get out and actually work, right? We tried to get at least 50% of them to be millennials. That's a big deal. We did get quite a few. I don't think we quite, I think we're about 30%, but it's hard to get 50% that are available and have the knowledge, skills, and abilities that we're looking for. We're trying to keep it around 15 or less. I think we're right at 15 right now. We asked them to commit at least four hours a month to this project. And that is made up of committee meetings and the larger DIRTT meeting, the team meeting. So we broken that team down into five committees. We have the executive team or executive committee, which I already talked about. We have branding and marketing, plazas and weight finding, downtown focus, and rivers and trails and activities. The executive team is charged with developing the program and the business plan, so that's why Amber is on the executive team working on funding. So we're going to, we're, like I said, we've already asked, submitted two grant applications. We're working on another. We're scheduling private donor events to try to get some private donations. We're also going to be holding some more fundraisers. We just finished a fundraiser. We raised about 20,000. After expenses, I think we'll be around 17, 15, 17, somewhere in there. That team also is coordination with the city, the county, and any other agencies that we're working with, like Bureau of Recreation, et cetera, BLM. We're also working with the businesses and property owners here in town. We're trying to design that business mix. So this isn't going to be try to open up a business for, for lease. It is, no, I want to put this type of business into that space. So it's a targeted approach to building your downtown retail and dining. The, the executive team would also approve any of the committee action plans, and I'll talk about the other committees here in just a minute, synchronize those plans with available funding, and then prioritize which projects get done based on the funding that we have. Branding and marketing has already begun. As you saw the logo at the beginning of the presentation, that was actually done by Amber, giving some input from the executive team. And the mayor actually coined the Gem of the Payette slogan, so we've already begun working on some logos and some branding. They're also going to develop our in-house instead of hiring Mr. Brooks's company to do that branding and marketing plan. Because we have a marketing expert, we're going to do it ourselves. That saves us about $100,000. That plan would, if we outsourced it, would probably cost between 75 and 100 grand. So she'll be doing that in-house, and she's looking at what sets us apart, you know, the logos and the brands, and then what is the perception that we want Emmett to give? The plaza and weight finding, this, I'm actually leading this committee. This is looking at our local parks and how do we turn them into plazas? What design does that need to look at? What, you know, what kind of activities, activities and themes we want to have? Not trying to, you know, interfere with what's going on today, like our farmer's market, for example. That would continue. It just, we'd want to improve the space for those types of activities as well. And the whole purpose is to make the plaza multifunctional, so it can be used for many things, and it attracts more activities, right? And we would then program activities. So instead of just having one, you know, twice a week, you'd have something down there perhaps 320 days a year. And then weight finding and signage, weight finding is basically, how do you find what's going on in town and where everything is located? This includes gateways and archways and, as well as that blade signs that we'll work with the Downtown Focus Committee on. The Downtown Focus Committee, the mayor's leading this committee, and it's looking at beautification, the facades of the buildings, the trees, the planters, et cetera, looking at how can we improve our parking? If you put in angled parking, you increase parking by 30% just by changing the stripes on the pavement. And the mayor's and his staff are working, select staff are working on that right now. How do we improve our sidewalks to provide seating and outdoor dining? And then I already talked about the blade signs for all of our merchants and standardizing what are those going to look like. And we're working with, actually, some of our, like Perta, will probably be involved in making those signs, so we'll use some of our local resources as well. And then River and Trails is looking at a number of things, and they've got a very active committee. There is a partially, I'll call it a green belt trail along the river that never got completed. So they're looking at that, and how do we gain right-of-way to finish that trail, perhaps connecting it to the Gem Island so that you can go out there? And the mayor talked, we're working with another foundation to possibly acquire an additional piece of land that will provide even more outdoor recreation connected to both of those. So they're also looking at the river and activities around the river, much like they've done in Boise and McCall, what might be appropriate for Emmett. Organizing our tubing activities. One of the things we discussed in our, one of our committee meetings was, you know, as we've grown in the last few years, the tubing on Washington is getting dangerous. We have children running across the highway. There's no traffic control there. The parking is, it's on private property, and it's just kind of gotten out of control. So how can we improve that? We don't want to stop it, but if we move the, for example, we move the parking to the island, and that is the official takeout place, not at, at the highway, right? And then we provide a shuttle service up to Plaza Bridge, much like they do over in Boise. So now you don't have to have two cars, you just have to have one car, and you can park at the island in a designated parking area with bathrooms and, you know, all the facilities that you need, and then shuttle people up that want to, and perhaps rent some tubes, some paddle boards, et cetera, to generate some income to help pay for those activities. A side note, one of the things that Roger shared with us, Indian Creek Plaza has their little ice skating ribbon that they do in the wintertime for three months. You know what they make off of that? $300,000 a year renting ice skates, 100 grand a month. I'm not saying that's our goal. I'm just saying those are the type of things you can generate just by having something available for people to do. And then last, railroad is something that came up, and that's probably a phase two or a long pull because anything with a railroad takes forever. But they're trying to talk to INPR about reviving the railcar, a scenic tour along the river, perhaps from here to Horseshoe Bend. Again, these are just concepts. These aren't in any kind of project plan yet. Those are things that we've talked about. So what are our next steps? Well, we're kind of in the information gathering phase right now. Well, we're kind of in the information gathering phase right now. We've got the four or five committees. Each of those committees is meeting on a regular basis. We have a monthly meeting, it's next Tuesday at 1:00, right? Yeah, here in chambers. We're working on those. Right now, like I said, my committee, we're gathering information. Once we have the, and we're close, we're gonna go visit Indian Creek Plaza to learn what lessons they've learned when they, when they did their project, right? And then we're gonna go look at a couple other plazas, and then I think we're ready to sit down and talk about what do we want to have in each location, or what do we recommend in each location. We're looking at, we're working with the Kiwanis, we have a member of the Kiwanis on our team, looking at Bowman Park, and how do we change it into Bowman Plaza? What does that look like? And then we're looking at Blazer Park and Pickle Park, which are right on Washington as well. Once we know what the project list looks like, we'll put together some cost estimates, we'll continue the fundraising, and then hopefully, maybe even as early as late this year, we'll get into some project execution in a few areas. And I already talked about, we have monthly meetings to review what the committees, the committees basically come together, share where they're at, and then could coordinate, because a lot of this overlaps. I gave this presentation to business and property owners, and I, they said, well, what can we do? So I put together a slide of what, what we asked them they can do. Right now, they can on their own start doing some beautification downtown, start increasing their business hours after 6:00 PM, focus on a day or two on the weekend right now until we get things, this is like, it's a work in progress and you kind of got to get some momentum going, right? So how can they, what can they do right now? Well, they can increase their business hours on the weekend. We ask for, we got all their contact info, and then work with us as we go through this process. So, and I've already met with several building owners and business owners about how can they change their business plan to incorporate some retail? We've got some commercial work going on on Main Street, that's not what we want, we want retail, and they've been very open, said, oh yeah, I never thought about having a retail shop in the front of my building. Good idea. So, questions? I know I went through that quick.
Mayor.
Yes.
I don't know what your plans are for the, the caption of Valley of Plenty. But my, both sides of my family have been here in this valley since 1870s. They were farmers, they were ranchers, they were business, multiple business owners. That was one of the things that they prided themselves on, that there were so many, so many things from this valley that, that took place, they couldn't pin one thing down to specif, you know, be specific about it. And so I would like to see if that, I would hope that wouldn't be lost.
Oh, I don't think it'll be lost. It's just whether or not that is.
That was actually trademarked.
Yeah.
By somebody.
Yeah, I don't think we own it, though.
We don't.
Really?
So, yeah, it's not gonna be lost, I just don't know if it's.
Can't put it up on the screen.
Vision statement for EDF, you know? I think they adopted it from somebody else, but I'll keep that in mind, it's good, good feedback. Thanks.
I didn't know it was trademarked.
Any other questions?
Someone from here in town? Are they still alive?
No other questions?
Well.
Well, that's, that means that they didn't care, or he did such a great job.
I'd be glad to come back and provide some updates as we get further down. Right now, like I said, we're in the information gathering, we're trying to get some fundraising going, get some funding coming in so we have a budget to work with, we're putting together a proposed budget. The mayor's been very helpful in, in working on our committee, and we appreciate your support.
We, there's a proposal, we have, as, as Commissioner Willie said, Chair Willie said, we have two grants that we are applying for. And the grant writer, who is a professional grant writer in Driggs, I think is where she lives, has asked that the council support both of these efforts. The first one, the To Whom It May Concern, has to do with the AARP, and that's helping out the seniors, and we're already talking about having places where we could put metal benches.
Benches.
Comfortable benches downtown, ones that won't rot and that sort of thing, and probably have them, what do you call that, that paint thing that?
Powder coat?
Powder coat, yeah, have them powder coated. And then, the other one is because we had a, we had a Idaho Gem grant for the pickleball court. The, according to the guy that runs Idaho Gem, he says, well, the city needs to apply for the Idaho Gem, then if you're doing, if this is gonna benefit the city. City needs to apply for it, which we have the proposal there, and this is their resolution. They just sent it to us. And so I asked, I said, well, then, then who should be designated as the administrative agent? And they indicated, well, your public works director is fine. So, as a practical matter, I told, I told Mr. Freemeyer, I said, don't worry about it, the grant writer's gonna do all the work. We'll make sure it's correct, you just have to sign a document from time to time. So those are the, the two requests for support for these grants. I believe the AARP is, there's actually two of them. There's no way we're gonna get both, probably. We'll get one, and they are 10,000 each? It's either 10 or 20.
20.
It's 20,000 each. And then the Idaho Gem is up to $50,000, but they kind of lick their finger and put it up in the wind and see how much we deserve based upon, on what we're doing. We still have a little bit of data that we need to give the Gem Grant, but we're going to get that later in the week on, when the sidewalks were done down Main Street, that's fine, there's no way we're gonna make them any bigger, but there were some side streets that, the sidewalks are pretty ratty. And this is an opportunity to get those, to get those fixed. I will be talking to the IDT District 3 engineer Thursday. We're meeting in front of Brunswick at 1:00, and I'm gonna show them what we have planned with regard to angle parking, just on one side of the street. We don't have the room on Main to do it on both sides, even though, back in the old days, when you look at the pictures from the 50s and the 60s, at least judging by the cars, a lot of Nash Ramblers in there, they did have angle parking on both sides. And on a Saturday, the downtown was absolutely packed. But, think about it, they really, they really had the anchor businesses down there. You had the President Cafe, you had Alma's, you had, I don't, there must have been.
Albertson's was right there.
And Albertson's was right there.
Harrison's.
Yes.
Harrison's Variety.
Harrison's Variety, I mean, every one of those buildings had something you wanted to go to, and that you needed, at least on a weekend. So that's what we're trying to recreate. We understand that we have some issues with maybe some of the building owners, and we're, we're.
Working on it.
Working on that, soldiering through that. But, the, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the, the two letters to be signed by the president of the council, not the mayor, but the president of the council.
I would, yeah, I'd probably abstain.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's something that should be stated on the record, so Counselor Butler's.
Yeah, so he will abstain.
He will abstain.
He will abstain.
And then, you want to wait and I'll say something about the resolution when you get to it?
Sure.
Okay.
Anyway, they have the, the, the grant writer just is requesting the support from the council, so.
Are, are these grants matching grants that we have to?
We don't have to match anything. They will be asking what we're dedicating to this, and, and we, we have some funds, and the clerk and I will be talking about that. We have something in reserve that we'll be able to do. We're not gonna do everything at once. We're going to do as much as we can with the resources that we have, just as we always do. So.
Well, so, my comment to the mayor on the resolution was, I, I had a concern that having the, the city's public work director as the administrative agent for a private grant wouldn't be appropriate, but you're, what you're saying is that that grant is different and, and is a city grant?
Yes, it would be.
It will come to the city.
It would be directly for the city, and that's what, see, that's what the Gem Grant said. They said, oh, well, the city has to apply for the grant and apply the funds.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. It wasn't a private grant that the city was gonna be the.
No, it is, it's, it's from the state.
Okay.
It's a state grant.
Great.
ARP is different, I guess. Or AARP, I keep saying ARP, AARP.
They want me to join.
And you probably should look into that. So anyway, the, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the, the, both of the letters to be signed by President Henderson in support of the grants. And I didn't want to just make it one, one motion. Would I have to do them separately, or would you prefer separate?
Well, you've got them on there.
Separate items.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll do it separately.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the signing endorsement letter in support of the Gem of the Payette project.
All right. Thank you. Main motion has been made by Counselor Nebiker to approve signing endorsement letter in support of the Gem Payette project. The second was made by Counselor Ruzinkin. I understand that Counselor Butler will recuse himself from voting. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
I do a question. This is the first I've really heard of this. I wonder, since we're endorsing this, we probably have a pretty good base knowledge on what this is about. Great presentation tonight, I really appreciate that, but I would like, maybe once in a while, every couple months, them come back and.
I'd be glad to.
Because I'm sure the community is finding out we're endorsing that, we want to know what we're endorsing to.
Understand.
Mayor.
Yes.
Also, you said that this was a, a cut-down version of what you're, can you send us that PowerPoint? Can you send to the city so they can give it to us? Because I'd like to see what it is.
Yeah, it's just got more information from Roger Brooks in there, more detail about his findings and recommendations, but I'd be glad, yeah, I'll have to update the longer version, but I can do that.
Sure, you do that anyway for the groups you talk to.
And, Mayor, one more question?
Yeah.
President Henderson comfortable signing this document?
Yes. Yeah.
Mayor.
Yes.
I did wonder, what were the businesses, what's the response to being open till 8 on those nights? Sometimes staff's hard, sometimes family time, so I wondered what their response was.
Actually, their responses were very positive. We did have a couple of questions about why are we only doing the first two blocks? And we explained that you can only, you gotta bite off what you can chew, right? So we're starting here. And, and this is one of those areas where, once we get going, and you start to build some momentum, then we can talk about what else we can do, right? But it was very positive. I actually got questions after the meeting, what they can do now, and I believe the city's already got requests to add beautification outside some of the businesses, so I think it was very positive.
Oh, good, good, okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
You were talking about the signage that will be down low, I don't remember what you called.
Blade signs.
Okay, that will all be, I mean, it will be specified to the business, that they'll be.
Standard.
Yep, I'll let the mayor answer that one, it's in his area.
Mr. Sol and I are already, we're already figuring that out. And I just returned from Moscow over the, over the weekend.
Idaho.
Unless Moscow.
And every business, every, and I tell you, that sit, that downtown has popped.
Yeah.
Every business has a blade sign. They're all standard size, and you, you just walk down and you can tell what that business is, because the blade sign tell, you don't have to look up, you don't have to look to the side, to, you know, the, the flat thing to see what it is. Anyway.
Another example's the North End.
Yep.
Yes.
They have all blade signs in that area, too.
I just wanted to make sure they were gonna be all essentially uniform.
They will be.
With the exception of the differences of each business.
All right. Any other questions, or shall we go to the vote? Motion has been made, duly seconded and repeated. All those in favor of the motion, with the exception of Mr. Butler, who has recused himself, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All right, on item C. Approve the resolution endorsing application for the city Idaho grant.
Mayor.
Gem grant, yes.
I make a motion to approve resolution endorsing application for the Idaho Gem grant funding.
And it's been seconded. What was it? Counselor Harris? To approve the resolution endorsing application for the Idaho Gem grant funding. Any questions there? Same issues, same answers. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? And of course, Counselor Butler recused himself. So we have five yays, no nays, both motions pass. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Lylee, will you just make sure that this resolution gets the appropriate numbered?
Sure.
Thanks.
All right, going on to 10A. Approving the lease, oh, excuse me, we haven't done the consent.
Almost took his job away from him.
Yeah, I know.
That's the only job I've got.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
All right. Thank you. Main motion has been made to accept the consent agenda as presented, and President Henderson seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes unanimously. All right, 10A, approve the lease purchase of the 2019 Dodge Durango.
Mayor and council, yes, it is a Dodge Durango, there's two of them, so I'm doing those separate, is that correct?
Yeah, there's two.
Okay, all right. So I have the same explanation for both of those, and I'll give that now. As you know, we have still five vehicles that are leased, two of them have expired this year. As you know, we have the option either to give those vehicles back to the lease company, and then the lease company would sell those vehicles, and the money that they would get for those vehicles, they would put towards new leases. We have decided last year that we were not going to have any new leases this year, so that is not in my mind an option still. It's also not in my mind an option, because we obviously need the vehicles that we have. The vehicles have low mileage on them, and the $9,000 apiece is a good deal for those two vehicles. So what I would like to do is I would like to purchase those two vehicles back from them after the leases have now expired, and we would need to use the funds out of savings for that, so please include that into the motion. And we will do that for the one 2019 Dodge Durango, and then have to do that again.
All right, Chair and Mayor, ten motion.
Oh, Mayor.
Yes.
I just have a question for you. Is this your capital improvement, or is this actually out of the general fund savings?
General fund savings. Yes, yes. The capital improvement is normally budgeted in, and I had not budgeted that in this year, so that's why it's coming out of that.
So there's nothing in there for these lease payments, right, that in your current budget?
Correct, that's correct.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for the Emmett Police Department, City of Emmett, to purchase 2019 Dodge Durango VIN, last number is a 739255, in an amount of, amount of $9,000 using the savings from the City of Emmett general fund.
All right.
Second.
All right. The motion has been made to approve the lease purchase for the 2019 Dodge Durango VIN number 739255, in the amount of $9,000, with that, those funds coming out of the savings from the general fund. The main motion was made by Counselor Nebiker, with the second by President Henderson. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Lylee, savings I'm sure is very well capable of taking care of these payments.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Sure. It says valid through 3/8.
Valid through March 8th? Yeah, we just got these correct, you just got these?
These are the payoffs, yeah, I ordered the payoffs from, from the bank or.
And you received them on that date, is when you received them?
On that date, and they are aware that it had to come here tonight, so I made that clear to them.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none. President Henderson.
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler.
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Denham.
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Harris.
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker.
Yay.
Counselor Ruzinkin.
Yay.
Six yays, no nays, motion passes. Next matter is B, the similar item, different VIN.
Mayor.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the purchase, lease purchase of the 2019 Dodge Durango, last VIN number 739256, in the amount of $9,000, using general fund savings.
All right, thank you. The motion has been made to approve the lease purchase for the 2019 Dodge Durango VIN 739256, in the amount of $9,000, with the funds coming out of the savings in the general fund. Main motion was made by Counselor Nebiker, with the second by Counselor Ruzinkin. Any further discussion or debate? Hearing none. President Henderson.
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler.
Yay.
Counselor Denham.
Yay.
Counselor Harris.
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker.
Yay.
Counselor Ruzinkin.
Yay.
Six yays, no nays, motion passes.
Thank you.
Next matter.
Thank you.
Approve the notice of award to, do they say Rayner or Reener?
Rayner.
Rayner. Pump Systems, Inc., for the 12th Street Lift Station Upgrades, pre-purchase in the amount of $319,867. Good grief, Mr. Fremar.
I'm just spending all sorts of money. I wish I could come up and say, hey, can I have nine grand? Except for all my stuff is super expensive, but, so as you all know, Clint had brought this probably last year. We did send it out to bid. The bids that we got were a lot higher than this, so we decided, I think they were like 40 or 50 grand higher. So we decided to hold off on it, and we put it back out to bid. We got this number, which I, I actually think it's only like 39 or something like that thousand less than what it was before. And this is just for the equipment, the new lift station equipment, and it's a lot like the lift stations we have installed in the past, where it comes with just the equipment. It's not any of the contractual work yet, but, and the, our 12th Street Lift Station is the lift station that takes in pretty much, I'd say, probably 40% of the town, so everything, all the new subdivisions up there, all come through, and it takes all that, so. I'm requesting the motion to approve the notice of award for 12th Street Lift Station Upgrades Pre-Purchase of Rayner Pump Systems Incorporated in the amount of $319,867, with Mayor to sign.
What's the address where that's going?
So that'll be over by the high school. I don't know the exact address, but it's the lift station we have that sits right there on the bus lane of the high school.
One more question. Is there going to be a generator?
Yes, there's already, yeah.
Is the generator there?
No, actually, there's a generator there now, but we will be actually upgrading to a newer generator in this, it's actually in this package.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the notice of award for the 12th Street Lift Station Upgrades Pre-Purchase to Rayner Pump Systems Incorporated in the amount of $319,867, with Mayor to sign.
All right, thank you.
May I second that?
All right. Was that Counselor Denham?
Yes, it was. Thank you.
No, Kingham.
No. Yes.
Main motion to approve the notice of award to the Rayner, Rayner Pump Stations for the 12th Street Lift Station Upgrades Pre-Purchase in the amount of $319,867. The mayor to sign was made by President Henderson. The second was made by Counselor Denham. Is there any further debate or discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
So is this refabbing the one that's there, or is that a whole new lift station?
So we will be, the wet well that is there now, will actually, this will sit on top of that, and we'll get rid of, there is a dry fault that we have to climb in and out of and whatnot, so these will actually be submersible pumps, and it will be using that existing tank.
Is this just outdated, or is there more services that are being utilized there?
Um, both. It's outdated. I don't know the exact date on that lift station, but it's, it's old.
It's old.
And with all the new development we've had come in, it's just sending more stuff that way, and it is one of our main lift stations.
Was that put in when the high school was put in?
I am not 100% sure. I bet you it was older than that.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So I'm not 100% sure, though.
Any more funding for that? Is that in your budget, or is that what you're pulling out?
Yes, that is in my budget, but also with impact fees, we've started to get, we get $840 for every EDU, which is roughly each house that comes in. When a developer comes in, we charge for every lot, $840. So as of right now, it's not paying for it, but as we get the developments in and they start paying their, their shares, it will pay for this.
So that was directly related to development?
Yes.
It sounds like, too.
Yes.
Good deal.
Mayor?
Yes?
When did we start collecting on that?
Every time we have a, a new sub come in, that, we collect on that.
Starting when? What date did they start doing?
I am not 100% sure when our impact fees started.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
October, right?
What's that?
Impact fees.
Say it started in December.
December. Yeah. So I think we, well, we have one for sure subdivision that we've done with them?
Yes.
Yeah. So.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? No nays, all ayes. Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk, something about a work contract.
Yeah. Okay, I have a new contract that I'm asking for approval tonight. As you, this is our codifier. This is our new codifier that we've been using now for, I don't know, about a couple of years. The Sterling codifiers, as you're aware of, we had them for many, many years. They sold out to American Legal, then American Legal took over, and that didn't go so well for us, as Jake can attest. There was a little more struggles involved with them. So now we have changed over to the new company, Civic Plus. Civic Plus, we have been in our current contract, we pay them per page that we submit on ordinances to be added to our code, and those pages cost us $19.95 per page of the ordinance. So they, they are now changing their system to now become, instead of a per-page, per-page payment, they would like it to be a subscription, an annual subscription. So our annual subscription now will be $750 a year versus paying $19.95 per page. And so that is what this contract is. Now, the uplift, if you're looking at the contract right now, the uplift is, in a year, they'll increase it to 1,000. And so I asked them how they came up with this amount, and they said they took our history on what we have recorded in the past, and made, made a, a adjustment in, in what we normally would use. Average, sorry. Let's use, find my word. They took an average of what we normally would use to come up with it, the $750. Now, if, if we do choose to stay per page, that will go up 30%. They're going to increase all rates across the board per page 30%. So I do prefer to go with a subscription if we can.
So, so what, what was the cost at $19.95 a page?
I didn't ask them the breakdown of how many pages. They just took what we had sent them and run the scenario.
I didn't know what you paid them in the past. What, at, at the $19.95, do you know what you paid?
About $750.
Okay.
Yeah. Annually. So that's where they came up with the dollar amount for us. And every institution that they deal with is a different dollar amount, it's not all the same across the board. It's just on your usage.
So Lyleen, if you happen to go over, let's say you have a really busy year like that, and it's excessive that, will they raise that to the higher, it'll stay there? All right, good.
Yeah. First year it'll be 750, and then this time next year it'll be 1,000, and it'll stay that. Of course, everything increases along the way, but as far as I know at this point. So just looking for a motion to go ahead and approve that contract, so we can now have a subscription with them. And they do a good job for us, too.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd make a motion to approve the annual recurring supplement service contract with Civic Plus, with the mayor to sign.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. The main motion to approve the statement of work contract between City of Emmett and Civic Plus LLC, mayor to sign, was made by President Henderson. The second was by Counselor Harris. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. President Henderson?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Denham?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Harris? Counselor Nebiker?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yay.
Six yays, no nays. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we do activity reports?
Yeah, you go ahead, do yours right now while, while the building official is coming up.
You have my report. As you can see, it's a little bit different format this time. Mayor has got, gotten this all upgraded, so that's, that's our report. Do you have any questions on, for me?
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm not sure the mayor who would compliment on that. I really like this format. It's really easy to clean, they clean everything up a lot, so whoever instigated that, thank you, Mayor. Very good.
Glad to be of service.
It is very clean and easy to read. I think-
Very concise.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Mayor, counsel? Yeah, may I report?
How come you're so loud tonight?
How come I'm so loud?
Your shirt.
I don't know, it's got static cleaning, my pants got static to them, and it's horrible. Yeah.
Were you missing? Is that why you're wearing it?
Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, daylight saving! So it's worse.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, it just happened there, but that was funny. Mayor, council, you have any questions?
I started it, Kurt, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
I know you haven't, but have you heard anything from California yet?
I sent them off a few emails, and today I sent off one, and they did respond. They are willing, and we're going to be moving forward, I'm going to try and include a turbo into the bid as well, but right now, as it stands, and more than likely where it'll go, it'll be about 41,000, almost 42,000 for the engine. So I heard that back today, but if I can negotiate any more, then I will, on behalf of the city.
So that was not including a turbo, you said?
It was not including the turbo, because they were replacing the engine, or the motor in the engine, and the mechanic doesn't know if that, if the turbo is done or not, so. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Is that a new motor?
No, it'd be a rebuilt motor. So-
Are they rebuilding the one that's in it, or?
We're not going to rebuild it. Nope.
You're just taking the cash out?
We're just going to take the cash, and then we're going to look for a new engine, probably on the secondary market. There are some that, while I was back there listening to everything going on, I was looking at different engines that would serve our community and our neighbors very well, so. And I'll bring that information to you as I get more. I'm just trying to close off certain things-
Sure.
-before I move on, so.
How much more is a turbo?
I don't know. I don't know.
What is a turbo?
A turbo is what makes a diesel motor actually have power to it. They add extra air into it, so a diesel runs on 40 parts of, per air, per one part of fuel. Sounds like I actually know what I'm talking about when it comes to diesels, but.
It's a German thing, it doesn't-
Yep, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Alice. Alice, by the way, is kind of a celebrity. So tell us what you were appointed to.
Well, a few weeks, or actually about a month and a half ago, I was contacted by the CEO of the Idaho Community Foundation, and he was looking at replacing some of their Southwest Regional Board members that had retired, and wondered if I would be interested in representing the city and JIM County in that capacity. So, in talking with the mayor, and Jake kind of running a few things by, anyway, we agreed that, you know, that would be a good fit. There were avenues that I, I can recuse myself from any grants, because the city does rely on a lot of those different grants, and I certainly wouldn't want to, you know, impair that, but, anyway, I was asked to write a short bio and discuss a little further, and I received an email yesterday that their board of directors had agreed and wanted to appoint me as one of those board members for the Southwest Regional Committee that reviews grants and things like that, so. It's certainly an honor to, to serve and represent the City of Emmett in this capacity.
And you will acquire great information when we write a grant.
Yes, yes. Should be very helpful, so. Anyway, that, it's very honoring, and I'm, I'm thrilled to, to be able to serve in this new capacity, so it'll be fun.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
You have my report. Anybody have any questions or anything? I want to make one announcement. Our teen group, our newly formed teen group, Friday is National Pie Day, PI. They thought it would be fun if they celebrated by serving pie to folks, so they're going to be selling pieces of pie for only a dollar. And those funds will go for their teen activities and their long list of books that they want to purchase, so they'll start at noon, so come have a piece of pie and support our, our new teen group. They would really appreciate it.
What day is that?
On Friday.
Friday?
Friday the 14th. Officially National Pie Day.
Could I have 3.14 pieces of pie?
I don't, you know, you'll have to talk with the, the teen expertise.
All right. I will.
Okay, thank you.
Call lease.
Mayor and counsel, I do have a number of excuses why you do not have my new and improved, but I'm not going to give those to you. I will, I will have that report the next council meeting. I do have a story, though. I have a story.